This meeting will come to order. This is a special session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, September 30th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Scambaluri, here. Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sims? Councilmember Sims, I can't hear you. Hang on a second.
There you go. The host had to unmute me. I am here.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Sandberg?
Here.
Everyone present and accounted for, here is a summation of tonight's agenda. We will hear the following items in legislation for first reading. Appropriation Ordinance 2004, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing 2021 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. Two, appropriation ordinance 2005, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2021. Appropriation Ordinance 2006, appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2021. Ordinance 2025, to amend ordinance 1920, which fixed the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2020, regarding replacing maximum salaries with salary ranges for certain public safety personnel. Ordinance 2022, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2021. Ordinance 2023, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSCME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2021. Ordinance 2024, to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year 2021. We will then follow with matters of council schedule, and then we will adjourn to be followed immediately by a committee of the whole chaired by Councilmember Scambaluri. This is a special session, so there are no reports tonight. We're going to go straight into legislation for first reading. Madam Parliamentarian?
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2004 be read and introduced by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll of the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Appropriation Ordinance 2004, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates establishing the 2021 civil city budget for the city of Bloomington. There is no synopsis.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2005 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll of the motion to introduce APP or 2005?
Councilmember Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes, sorry.
And Rallo?
Yes.
That, that motion passes. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Appropriation Ordinance 2005, an ordinance adopting a budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2021. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance, approved by the Utility Service Board in August of 2020, sets the water and wastewater budgets for 2021.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2006 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll of the motion to introduce appropriation ordinance 2006?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Scambaluri?
Yes.
That motion passes. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Appropriation Ordinance 2006, appropriations and tax rates for Bloomington Transportation Corporation for 2021. There is no synopsis.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2025 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
That motion passes. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2025, to amend ordinance 1920, which fixes salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2020, regarding replacing maximum salaries with salary ranges for certain public safety personnel. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance 1920, which fixes salaries of officers for the police and fire departments for the year 2020. The amendment assigns pay grades and replaces maximum salaries with minimum and maximum salaries. Please note, this ordinance was revised after distribution in the legislative packet but before the introduction of the special session on September 30th, 2020. The revisions included correcting a reference to applicable state law and making corresponding changes in the first and third whereas clauses.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2022 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce ordinance 2022?
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Sims?
Yes.
That motion passes. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2022, an ordinance fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire department for the city of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2021. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the minimum and maximum salary rates for all fire and police personnel for the year 2021, in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2023 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce ordinance 2023?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes. That motion passes. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2023, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and AFSCME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2021. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum 2021 salary for all appointed officers, non-union and AFSCME employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. President, I move that ordinance, oh, no, I'm sorry. I would like to ask that ordinance 2024 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only by the clerk.
You'd like to ask or you're moving?
I'll move it.
Thank you.
I think it's one and the same. Yeah, second.
It's not the same, but we have a motion in a second. Well, will the clerk please call the roll of the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
The motion carries. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2024, to fix the salaries of all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington for the year 2021. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance sets the maximum 2021 salary rate for all elected city officials for the city of Bloomington.
Okay, that concludes legislation for first reading. Mr. Lucas, do we have any issues of council schedule to discuss tonight?
Just a reminder that after the special session concludes, we'll have a committee of the whole on the budget legislation that you just introduced. The discussion on APP or 2004 and 2006 will constitute the required public hearings on those items, and the council's adoption meeting on this budget legislation is currently scheduled for October the 14th, and that meeting will be held virtually, and members of the public wishing to join can access that via Zoom on the link posted on the council website.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. No other meetings ahead?
Not this week. Next week you'll have a regular session on Wednesday, and the Jack Hopkins Committee is scheduled to meet next Friday. I guess I should put a, an announcement out that the application deadline for the second round of Jack Hopkins funding was extended until this Friday at noon, so if any agencies are out there and haven't yet applied, you have a couple more days to do so.
Very good. Thank you for the update, Mr. Lucas. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we will immediately reconvene for committee of the whole chair by Councilmember Scambaluri. Is there a motion?
I move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Councilmember Scambaluri, you have the helm.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. It remains Wednesday, September 30th, and this is a meeting of the committee of the whole, the city council. Just to provide a little bit of a roadmap for this evening, we have seven pieces of legislation that we need to look at. You'll see them in a slightly different order on the committee of the whole agenda. That will allow us to look first at the one ordinance that relates to the calendar year 2020, and then look at the remaining six ordinances, including three APP awards, APP appropriation ordinances that focus on 2021. So, we will begin with 2020 and ordinance 2005 related to police and fire, replacing the maximum salaries with salary ranges. I believe that Ms. Caroline Shaw is with us.
Sorry, did you say 2005 or 2025?
2025.
Thank you.
And Ms. Shaw, please go ahead. And you're muted. Now you're not.
Thank you. The dog just visited, so bear with me a moment. Good evening, councilmembers. This first ordinance is an amendment to salary ordinance 2025, or is amendment to an existing salary ordinance. The number of this one is 2025, and I appreciate you entertaining this one this evening. This amendment allows us to replace the flat salaries listed with salary ranges, which allows for police and fire officials who are not, who are not covered by the collective, their respective collective bargaining agreements. That's mostly police and fire management and some other positions. This also gives us more flexibility in assigning base salaries based on individual skills, experience, and other qualifications. It came to our attention that compared to their peers in other departments, the fire deputy chief and battalion chiefs were underpaid. We communicated that we had increased their salaries for this year, and this ordinance allows us to do that. Both police and fire management want the flexibility to compensate employees for their experience of skills and other qualifications, and the salary ranges allow us to do that. I'm happy to take any questions at this time regarding this legislation. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Are there questions from council? Seeing none, let us go to public comment. Is there any public comment? Mr. Lucas, you are monitoring that, I assume?
I believe the clerk's office is going to manage public comment.
My fault.
That's fine. But to answer your question, I don't see anybody who has raised their hand, if they'd like to raise their hand in the raise hand function, or send a private chat. I still don't see anything.
Last call? None? Madam Clerk?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Then let's come back to council for questions or comments. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thanks. A question actually from Ms. Shaw. In the memo, you mentioned that this would allow for the city to raise the fire deputy chief and fire battalion chief salaries to correct pay inequity, in particular as related to peer departments, or, trying to look at the, see the exact language here. And you noted that the city came to the conclusion that those positions were underpaid. Could you speak just a little bit, in just a little bit more detail to the process of identifying that inequity and who we were comparing ourselves to in coming to that conclusion?
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. So, the process for this one was comparing, we assumed a deputy chief of the fire department is very much like a deputy in any other city department, and we compare that way, and we looked at, so typically a deputy or an assistant director is a grade 10, and that's how we assign the deputy chief. We assigned him to a grade 10. The battalion chiefs are just one step below that, a supervisor, an assistant superintendent, and those are typically grade nines, and again, that's how we did that. So, we looked throughout those pay grades and came up with the salaries. And I will also add that, you know, the natural comparison is police management, but police are different than our fire management, and they also get added pay based on longevity, longevity certifications and other, I haven't written down so much. There are three things that police get that fire management don't get, and I can, I can email you about that if you're curious. I just am not seeing that right in front of me right now. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Actually, I misunderstood the memo. I was thinking other, when you said other departments, I was thinking other fire departments other than our own, but you meant other city departments.
Yes, yes.
Much clearer, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Seeing none, is there any final comment from council? And seeing none, is there a move? Do you pass?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
And that's 900. Thank you, everyone.
Scambaluri, may I just?
Yes, please.
Make a comment just for the benefit of the public. So, this is a committee of the whole meeting, so all of our votes tonight are non-binding. They're just a straw poll vote of how we feel about the legislation at this moment, and the binding votes won't occur until October 14th.
At the earliest.
At the earliest, yes. They're scheduled for October 14th currently.
Good. Thank you for doing that. I meant to do that, and it's, it's not in my notes, therefore, it's not in my head. So, that ordinance, again, just to check our roadmap here, that ordinance focused on the calendar year 2020. The remaining six ordinances we look at tonight focus on calendar year 2021. I believe the mayor wanted to offer some remarks as well. Mr. Mayor, would you like to do that now, or would you like to do that before we get to the appropriation ordinances?
I think it might make sense just to frame, all these are dealing with the 2021 budget, and if it's okay with you, I might offer a few framing remarks. Thank you very much. Assume you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Thanks. So, you know, it was six weeks ago that we presented our budget for 2021 over four nights. I know you remember those nights, long nights. You'll hear from Controller Jeff Underwood and Human Resource Director Caroline Shaw again soon about much of that, and I just want to give a quick summary and framing. And I won't go through the vast majority of what we talked about introducing that entire budget. Just reminding, it is an unprecedented budget for unprecedented times with four enormous challenges in front of us, the pandemic, the economic recession, and racial persistent, persistent racial injustice we have to deal with, and climate emergency right in front of us requiring adaptation and mitigation. Also, I just would remind us, we're all, I think, living through not only the stress of 2020's pandemic, but also a very divided, stressful, even fearful country. Last night's presidential debate embodied that drastically with dysfunction and the distress evident there, and so there's kind of questions of, do we get through all this? How do we get through all this? And we will get through all this, and our job here in Bloomington is to do our very level best to continue our progress together, to find how we become a better community for all of us, to recover from the recession, and in doing so, recovering forward toward advancing racial, economic, and climate justice. I'm not going to repeat all that I said before. I'll remind us of the principles embedded in this budget, focusing on supporting and valuing our people, our 750 people who deliver all the services for the city, also emphasizing transparency in all that we do, as well as focus on innovation, change, reform, and also as a community that we aim high to do good things and reach high. Since the week of August 17th in that presentation, we got feedback from the council, council members individually, as well as from the public. We received 142 questions, really over 200, counting multiple parts, multiple parts and other feedback. Lots of it was clarifications and details. There's written responses to all those, and those are all available to everyone, and tonight I thought it would be helpful to just explain changes since August and responses to some of the key questions. There were three, I'm gonna, I'm gonna note three key areas of interest, substantial questions and comments that we got, including the organizational choices for the engineering department, also for the transportation demand management position, and then third, issues related to the police department. And let me just respond directly to those in order. On the engineering department, we have in the budget proposed an independent division as opposed to, as opposed to remaining in planning and transportation, or returning to public works where it lived for many years. The short answer is, to the comments, these are all reasonable options to consider, but we followed the NOVAC organizational assessment in recommending the establishment of a standalone engineering department. Many discussions took place among all of those involved over the past several months, and we opted for the new cabinet department with intensive coordination among all three directors of public works, engineering, and planning and transportation, all of whom report to the mayor. Engineering essentially implements the recommendations of both planning and public works departments in regard to transportation and right-of-way policy, and it's, in effect, the builder of what is recommended by those departments and their respective boards and commissions. With each of these positions being directors, they all have the ability to go directly to me, to the mayor, who appoints them all, and for any support and guidance, it is my job and that of my administration to assure coordinated and effective administration of consistent policy. We are committed to doing just that. As you know, we are recruiting a full-time city engineer at present, and sincerely appreciate the very able leadership of Neil Copper as interim in the meantime, and happy to respond on that issue if you like. Second, as to the transportation demand management position, this, as you know, is the single new general fund-funded position sought in this very tight budget year, reflecting its high priority. Our administration considered locating this position in either planning and transportation or economic and sustainable development, both of which have merits. As noted during the discussion with council in the week of August, as highlighted also in the transportation demand management plan, the primary activities of the TDM effort for the foreseeable future include promotion and communications, including particularly outreach to employers and to residents. TDM efforts are primarily focused on optimizing existing sustainable modes and programs of transportation by promoting them and building programs that incentivize their use through employer-based programming. This type of activity is very similar to much of ESD, Economics and Sustainable Development Department's core focus, including that department's focus on sustainability engagement with the public and with employers. TDM certainly also relates to planning and transportation with its focus on land use development and policy, infrastructure planning, and code enforcement in the planning department, all of which also relate to employers and residents, of course. The decision where to place the new position was made through extensive joint planning and discussion among planning and transportation department, ESD, and the mayor's office. Our decision to place TDM, at least at the outset, in ESD reflects that department's progressive organizational structure, combining sustainability, business relations, and the arts under a unified effort, and its strong track record executing strategic plans with many established relationships that will benefit, we believe, the TDM position for a quick, effective launch. Wherever it would be located, the TDM position will require close coordination with employers, residents, sustainable transportation asset managers, including planning and transportation, ESD, parks, transit, and others. I'll just note, look, reasonable people can differ on both of these choices of engineering and TDM. In our judgment, the proposals reflected in the budget maximize our chances of delivering the best results for our community. We, of course, recognize there are other options, and we emphasize transparency in our work and specific goals and outcomes that we pledge to pursue, and accountability to the council and the public for those outcomes. We also believe in innovation and learning, and if we learn of better options, we absolutely are willing to consider those in coming years. Third, council presented the most questions about our police department, really a quarter of all the questions were about that, and a lot of public input as well through petitions and other communications. For context, as we get into that issue, I just want to remind all of us of the increase investments in Bloomington Police Department since 2015 with the Public Safety Local Income Tax that was passed. Since 2015, the BPD's budget has increased 34%, and its personnel has increased 43% as invested in equipment, in overall staffing, including sworn officers, major changes in dispatch services, and others. I believe- I believe this reflects the esteem with which our community and this administration and this mayor and this council hold our Bloomington Police Department. It is the most progressive police department in the state and among the most progressive in the nation. It is filled every day with heroes who risk their lives in protecting all of us every day. It is a department that also continues to innovate and reform from downtown resource officers to social workers, to neighborhood resource specialists, to the Stride Center opening this year, to the 21st Century reviews and continued reviews of Eight Can't Wait and Campaign Zero and others. The 2021 budget proposal for the Bloomington Police Department was built on supporting continued innovation and supporting our officers and employees in their day-to-day work. The 2021 budget focuses on improving services in these very challenging times. There are two major elements in the proposal of note. First, we recognized that realistically, BPD cannot add more than five sworn officers net new over the next 15 months. That's in light of projected retirement, attrition, limits on the state's training academy and other factors. Building from its sworn officers on staff of 95, in other words, then we have funded the 100 officer positions fully for 2021 that we believe are possible to fill. Now, I want to clarify too, some have called this a cap. It is, it is not a cap of number. It is, it is a total budget funding of 100 positions for an average of 100 FTEs, 100 positions filled throughout the year. Now, that realignment of funding allows for continued innovation in the department with five new positions who can be hired in the next 15 months and even sooner to assist in the day-to-day work, namely two new social workers, two new neighborhood resource specialists and a public data analyst. The second major element in the police department budget is a commitment to ongoing review and community input on our structure and the approaches to policing more generally. And to do that more intensively, more thoroughly, and to have a time, a time for that kind of review in the months ahead. The Board of Public Safety is in the midst of a 90-day review revisiting the 21st Century policing report, including the Eight Can't Wait and Campaign Zero advice to make sure we're doing all we can as a department in compliance with those. And very importantly, even in July, two months ago now, I outlined a proposed community-based task force for a longer-term review, taking the time leading into next summer's preparations for the 2022 budget. I will note, we look forward to continued collaboration with council members and the public on how best to structure and activate quickly that very important community-based, long-term review process. A third element that I want to share tonight, as we've continued to get feedback and continue to work as a community toward the best system of public safety that serves all of our residents fairly. I'm planning in the next several weeks to announce some steps to help retain high-quality current officers and attract new ones in this challenging environment. Working with the leadership of the Bloomington Police Department and within the 2021 proposed budget, I intend particularly to focus on retaining our high-quality officers and encouraging more of them to live in the city, as well as recruiting new officers to do the same. I expect to develop plans for housing allowances and take-home cars for sworn officers, current or new, living in the city. And we will also explore a pilot program for take-home cars for some officers living in the county outside city limits with special responsibilities for whom immediate access to patrol cars would be helpful to the department. The overall feedback we heard on the police budget was divergent and varied. This community strongly supports our high-quality officers and our progressive department. And we also recognize very real concerns and issues that persist in the country and in our community, reflecting structural racism that demand engagement and addressing. I believe in the 2021 budget and accompanying planned actions that we are taking appropriate steps reflecting those challenges as a, as a both-and community. I'll conclude, I appreciate your patience. I'll conclude, conclude with just a couple other updates. First, we did receive estimated local income tax amounts projected for the 2021 year. You'll hear details of that from Jeff Underwood of what the projected levels are and they will help protect our reserves to some degree. Second, I'll note, as you know, the council voted against new revenues at this time with the proposed Economic Development Local Income Tax. You know, I believe that additional revenue is critical for our community's future and our role in that as a city government. I look forward to continued exploration of options in the coming months to address that. I also believe and must report that we have to plan for a potential without any new revenue. And budget pressures are very real without new revenue. Our plan to maintain adequate reserves and services means we have to look through 2022 and beyond. And we need to begin the protection as needed in 2021 if no new revenue is identified. In that light, we will continue to recover forward expenditures to help our community recover, but with necessarily somewhat slower pace or care in 2021. I do believe this will limit our ability, it could limit our ability to help some of our people. We basically need to be in a position, in my view, to save $1 million in 2021 from planned, previously planned investments, depending upon whether we are able to identify new revenue sources or not, which means during 2021, it is my intention to, to slow or withhold some items until we find out what the revenue situation will be, including things like, while we can plan for the Waldron operations through the summer of 2021, operations thereafter will depend significantly on what sources of revenue there might be. I will note in an aside that I intend in the next few weeks to assemble a committee, a community-based committee, to help look at those long-range options for the Waldron after the summer of 2021, to look at the options for that. And I expect to ask that committee to be formed in the weeks ahead and look forward to talking with you about how to do that best. Another example would be the Jack Hopkins funding expansion of 200,000 to hold that at least till the second half of the year to be sure what our revenue situation is. We may need to pace investments in infrastructure, job supports, energy efficiency and others as part of Recover Forward to be assured that we can realize $1 million of savings if we need to in 2021. We will continue to do all that we can to help the economy recover. But I think it's important to note that that uncertainty means we have to be more cautious in tightening, in tightening our belt for 2021. So I'll close, you know, these are, these are challenging days ahead. This is a very extraordinary time. We know we have lower revenues coming from local income tax in '22 and '23. Gas taxes right now, the telecom fund is continuing to shrink at double digits annually. And we know we have higher expenses that are coming as the city increases in size, new parks coming online, the Waldron, our growing city IT infrastructure, et cetera. So it is critical and we will continue to manage toward the responsible fiscal situation that we've already outlined. I also know, you know, that the looming challenges of climate, of race, of the economy for all of our residents are very real and right in front of us and something that I look forward to addressing together with you all. I'm gonna stop at that and appreciate the time and I hope that helps frame what you're gonna hear over the next, next few minutes from my colleagues and others. Thanks.
Mayor Hamilton, thank you. What is the pleasure of the committee at this point? Would folks like an opportunity to ask questions now? Or would we like to do that in the context of each ordinance that's coming up? Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
I would recommend we do it in the context of each ordinance.
Are there any objections to that approach? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's move forward to ordinance 20-22. This is an ordinance, and again, we're looking ahead to six ordinances right now. The next three focus on salaries for 2021. This ordinance is fixing the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington for the year 2021. And I believe we have Ms. Shaw to present this.
Good evening again, everyone. Caroline Shaw, HR Director. This first ordinance is ordinance 2022, which outlines the salaries for officers of police and fire departments. Salaries for fire captains, chauffeurs and first-class firefighters are listed according to the current salaries in the contract between the city of Bloomington and Bloomington Metropolitan Firefighters Local 586. These personnel will currently receive the salary set in the 2020 ordinance. But the good news is, since I drafted this memo, we do have an agreement that's been brought forth to the, to the firefighters. And pending their approval, we'll be back in short order to bring that agreement to you for your approval and also update our salary ordinances. Other fire personnel will receive a 2% increase, those not covered by the collective bargaining agreement. In addition, the fire prevention officer, his job title has changed to community engagement officer. That was also based on a recommendation by the NOVAC study. Secondly, the police salaries are set by, for officer first class and senior police officers set by this legislation and through negotiations between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 88. For 2021, that represents a 2.8% increase to their base salaries. Other personnel listed will receive a 2% increase in 2021. And this salary ordinance also has the ranges that we discussed in the previous ordinance. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
And let's go to council for questions. Councilmember Volan.
Yes, procedural one, I think, for Ms. Shaw. You say that the salaries taken to account ordinance 2025, which we haven't yet passed. Can you guide us through that?
Yeah, I think I misspoke. I apologize. I was just trying to say that the grades that we added, or you will also see in this legislation, we added grade ranges to the positions not covered by the collective bargaining agreements. That's, I was just trying to say that simply and that sounds like I made it more confusing. I apologize.
I'm still confused though. I mean, so you're saying that this ordinance has ranges in it, just like ordinance 2025 was gonna do for this year's salaries? Is that right?
But those have been bumped by the 2% for 2021. It's not identical, it's just the ranges are a consistent theme we're moving forward.
Okay, but this ordinance isn't dependent on ordinance 2025?
No.
That's what I wanted to know.
And I just, I, for sake of time, I did not go into the detail of the ranges, but I'm happy to if you'd like me to. It's the same concept that I discussed in the previous ordinance.
No, no, I think I have my question answered.
Okay, sorry for the confusion.
Other questions? Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Yes, I had a couple of questions about clothing allowance. The, for the fire department, there's the clothing allotment of $450. And I thought we had moved to a quartermaster system where the city provides all of the, you know, uniform and safety equipment and everything that is needed. So what's that $450 for?
So you're correct, we do have a quartermaster system. And prior to the introduction of that, I believe the salary, the clothing allowance was something around $1,600. Mr. Underwood probably knows that number by heart. And Fire Chief Jason Moore is going to speak up and tell you exactly what that amount is for. Thank you, Chief Moore.
Good evening, Jason Moore, Fire Chief. The clothing allowance covers their uniform items. So what was put into the quartermaster was their protective equipment. Prior to the agreement in 2017, our firefighters had to buy their own fire gear. Now with the city quartermaster system, the city provided two sets of gear for every firefighter and, but they are still responsible for their uniform items.
Okay, thank you. And I have a similar question or the same question really for the police, where it's more, let's see, clothing allotment is $1,600. So what does the city provide for police and what do they have to purchase with the $1,600?
There's Chief Diefkoff. Thank you, Chief.
So the very first year of the officer's employment, the city buys everything. After that, the officers are required to maintain their own equipment, well, most of their equipment, which would require all of their uniforms, their, their gun belt accessories, those types of things.
But does the city provide like the bulletproof vests?
Yeah, the city does provide the ballistic vest. And we provide the radio and the handgun. But all other equipment, the officers are responsible for upkeep on that.
Okay, and is that, is $1,600 an average? You think that reflects an average of what officers spend?
Yes, you'd be surprised how much uniforms and equipment cost.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? I'm not seeing any. Okay, with that, let's go to the public for comment. Madam Clerk, I believe you're monitoring the public and their interest in speaking. Do you see anyone who would like to offer comment?
No, not yet. Once again, I'd like to remind those who are watching to use the raise hand function if you'd like to speak or to send a message in the chat. And with that, I think we have Officer Paul Post who'd like to speak. So Mr. Post, if you would like to unmute yourself, you can go ahead.
Good evening, Paul Post. I'm the President of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 88, representing the bargaining unit, the Bloomington Police Department. I had a prepared statement made, but I'd like to actually address a couple of things first that the mayor pointed out. He said that there's been a 43% increase to the personnel at BPD since 2015. And while that sounds like a lot of people have been added to the BPD, in fact, what that means is that nearly 50% of the agency left during his first term. That's turnover that people have left that we're trying to replace. That goes back why we're so concerned about the reduction in sworn officer positions is because we know, like he said, it is very difficult to recruit and retain officers. The second point I'll make is that he was speaking about hiring only, or being able to only hire five more officers theoretically over the next year. That refers really to the idea of hiring brand-new, untrained officers that would have to be put through a full police academy. The reality is, if we had a highly competitive pay and benefits package, we would be able to attract high-quality candidates from other agencies, which is where we're losing people to right now. If we were able to hire lateral transfer officers, we could certainly fill up to 105 officers. But we have to be attractive in that regard to do so. So again, as I've said before, and I know we've, we've talked to most of you either in person or through email, we would like to point out the FOP strongly opposes any reduction to sworn personnel funding this year at BPD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else who would like to offer comment?
Sorry, you can't hear me saying, I'm looking through and I don't see any hands raised and I do not see anything in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Let's call, let's say final call for public comment. Madam Clerk, nothing? Okay, thank you. With that, let's come back to council for council questions. And then we'll go to council comment. Councilmember Volan.
I'd like to hear the administration's response to Officer Post. If they have one.
I can make one response and others may want to respond as well. I believe when the mayor was talking about the 43% increase, he was referring to positions, not replacements. So actual, for, I believe that's what he meant.
So actual, I believe that's what he meant. And Mr. Mayor Hamilton, if I got that wrong, please correct me.
Are there other, Councilmember Volan, does that speak to your question? Mr. Mayor, would you like to comment as well?
Or Chief DeKoff.
Or Chief DeKoff.
I'm sorry, I'm bouncing in and out of different things. Ms. Shaw is absolutely correct on that 43%, and, you know, it's, I think that's directly a comparison, not of replacement people. It's of new positions that were added to the department in the last five years.
So just to be clear, five years ago, there were, the reciprocal, there are 43% more staff net in the police force than there were five years ago?
That's correct. No, a lot of that is in expansion of dispatch investment of other supporting off, supporting positions. But if you look at the overall org chart for the Bloomington Police Department 2015 compared to today, it's a 43% increase in positions. That's certainly not a 43% increase in sworn officers. They have gone up. We've steadily improved, increased numbers of officers as population has increased. But that is a reflection of position additions, not individual bodies that are replacing others who left. It's position increases.
Right. Well, okay, so I'm just trying to break this down here. Without counting dispatch, what has been the growth of the department net? What would the percentage be?
I don't know what the exact percentage would be without dispatch, but it's substantial. Sworn officers have probably increased about 8% or 10% over that period of time. And then back office have increased more than that, I think, over that time. And Chief DeKoff may have those numbers, or we can get him for you. But the, that detail is certainly available. It includes dispatch, but also a number of others.
Does the chief have anything to add?
We can get you a breakdown of what those positions are.
Okay. Well, my final follow-up question is as follows. In my first year on council, there were 84 sworn officer positions. And Mayor Cruzan made a pledge to increase the number of officers by two a year until it reached 100, which was achieved in 2012, 2011, something like that. So, excuse me, since 2012, we're, I mean, currently in 2020, we're at a net of 105. Can you explain the growth of the officer pool over the past decade? Am I, am I missing something here? Because it doesn't seem like there's been that, I mean, what was the number of sworn officers when the Hamilton administration began? I don't think it was that different.
Is that a question for me?
I'm not sure at this point. I, you know.
We've had, we've added quite a few non-sworn positions. And so I'll have to get you to break down to, to explain which, what those were. I think the number of officer positions have increased five under, under Mayor Hamilton, since he took office. Because you're correct, we got to 100 under, under Mayor Cruzan.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, and let's go around for final comment. Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. I certainly want to commend any effort to address the morale issue and the retention issue in our Bloomington Police Department. And I do thank the mayor and the deputy mayor for entertaining a series of two meetings in which a majority of us came to discuss our very grave concerns about the staffing levels. That seems to be the number-one concern and the number-one thing that I think we need to try to address. While I've also been informed that it is helpful to think about things like take-home cars, that was actually recommended by some of the leadership that we had an opportunity to speak with, I'm not quite as convinced that a housing subsidy will do a whole lot, given that many individuals who are currently working in the police department who live elsewhere, they have families, they have children in school, and I'm not quite sure what the value of that is. Although I applaud any step in the right direction to deal with the exodus. People are applying, as we speak, to go to other jurisdictions. And we are going to lose our fine reputation for being a progressive and honorable, well-trained police department under the leadership of Chief DeKoff if we are not mindful of the need to recruit and retain. And of course, salaries have a certain part to do with that. But the number-one thing that I would like to address with this budget, and hopefully we can do some other things between now and, you know, soon, before our loss of really good, experienced, well-trained officers becomes a serious issue for us, is for us to take a look at those staffing levels. Because we can kind of look at the numbers and say, oh, we've increased this, and we've increased that. The bottom line is, the individuals that we talk to who are working police officers, sworn officers, are under great stress because of not enough, not enough numbers. That'll be the number-one thing we can do to help them maintain their ability to do their work, to still have time off, to still take time for their own mental health, which is critical, if we want to maintain the police department that we have. So, once again, I don't mean to sound critical. I want to thank the mayor and the deputy for listening to those of us who came to him between the first round of the budget and now. But I'm very convinced that there's more that we can do, and I will be working very tirelessly to see that we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Are there other comments? Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yeah, first of all, I hope that it wasn't a majority of council members who met with the administration to discuss.
No, it was not. It was over a series of meetings. Thank you for that. We know, we know better.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So I think that the, I'm very pleased to hear what the mayor said about looking into other ways to retain and recruit good police officers, because I do think there is an issue with the amount of pay relative to how expensive it is to live in Bloomington. And it would, it's really best as far as feeling part of a community and policing your peers and being part of the group that you police. It would be preferable for me to have more police officers live within the city limits. But I certainly understand why they do not, because it's so expensive to live here. So anything we can do as far as a housing allowance or even take-home cars as an incentive to live in the city or to live closer to the city, I think would be, would be a good idea. I did see all the information that was brought to us by Officer Price and others a year ago, when the, the union contracts were ongoing. And it does seem like our police are on the lower end as far as their salaries. Now, in this ordinance and in the subsequent ordinance, we will see that things are added for longevity, things are added for this and that and the other thing. But still, the overall salary, even with those add-ons, does not seem to put us in good company as far as rankings within the state. So now, I wasn't, none of us nine here were part of those negotiations. But I do think that if we can sweeten the deal somewhat with, with other kinds of incentives, that would be a big plus, both to recruit new officers and to show our current officers that we do appreciate them, we do value them, we do want them to be part of our community fully. And as far as this particular ordinance setting the salaries, I have no, no issues with it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional comment from council? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, Councilmember Scamblerie. As we move forward, first of all, I just want to piggyback on what Councilmember Sandberg says. Yes, we have discussed it before. We're not in total lockstep, but I think we're close enough to what she says is something I can support. But when we talk about the housing allowance and the take-home cars, and that has been part of the discussion before, but I still haven't really heard in any detail the fiscal impact of those initiatives. So I'm looking forward to hearing that. And part of the reason for the fiscal impact is how that may be offset by simply, I shouldn't have said simply, by how it may affect actual salaries, if that makes sense. If we had a higher salary, that was more acceptable, I think, for the officers, then how does that offset some of the other things that we were talking about? One of the other things that I have really heard in any detail is we know that some of our police officers in the past have had to do many things that the community is now saying is not police duties, per se, or some things police shouldn't have to be doing. And part of that was to replace that with our non-sworn officers, our NROs, or I'm sorry, neighborhood resource officers and our social workers. What I'm still waiting here actually is, with the implementation of those new positions, what are their job duties that will alleviate some of the police interactions from our sworn officers? And I think that has an impact as well as we move forward. So as we add non-sworn officers, and this is not to alleviate the need for any sworn officer, that's another discussion, I think. But I want to know, if we add these folks, what are some of the things that we're going to take away from the police officers that can make them more efficient in policing, if you will, that would help have an impact, I think, on morale and some of the job responsibilities that they have? So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment? Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, first I want to clarify that because the, I mean, if I have this correct, because the police union negotiates a contract, you know, this is kind of moot, the ordinance 2022. Their concern about lack of person power is important, but not, I think, directly related to this. I mean, they, they have at least two different issues, one of which is they believe there aren't enough sworn officers and that those officers aren't paid enough. And this ordinance deals with their pay. And clearly, when it's time for them to renegotiate, there has to be some dialogue about this topic. But in the meantime, we are talking about the police department here. And one thing I'll say is that I, Mr. Post's statement that, you know, if it's not just the number of people, but the pay, like, there's not a lot we can do about the pay. There's more we can do but the number of people. But, you know, I have never seen, in the past, so 10 years or so, the one other thing I remember about staffing at the police department is we've had trouble getting people through the academy. That, the academy's been a bottleneck for a long time. And that the idea that somehow we could hire more than five net new officers this year, I think is an accurate assessment. You know, it would take, I think, more, more than we can muster to grow by that rate this year. So I'm not entirely unpersuaded by the administration's argument that even if we wanted to, we couldn't hire 10 net this year, that based on all the constraints we're facing. So, you know, that's one thing that I haven't understood up until now is why anybody thinks we can get more people through the academy. And that, you know, five people is going to be the max we can make. But I also don't understand, I mean, one of the complaints of people in my district for as long as I've been a council member is, and I think it's reasonable on both sides, when the police call, when we, when we call the police, they don't come. They don't want to come and answer our concerns, because their concerns are quotidian, their quality of life issues. They're actually the kind of issues that the NROs and the DROs were intended to serve. And I understand the DROs are sworn, the NROs are not. But I continue to not understand why it is that the addition of non-sworn officers will not relieve sworn officers of some duties and concerns. You know, like, I got to the point where I gave up hope that, that officers would respond to quality of life issues because they're not life-threatening, they're not the kind of things that the police officers have said consistently are the things they're most concerned about, dealing with criminal, felonious issues around the city. So I have a lot to learn, but I also don't understand yet, it's not been fully explained to me, why NROs and DROs wouldn't be a relief on sworn officers. So I have, I'm looking forward to learning more about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Councilmember Flaherty, and then Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I actually have a question, if that's okay, to loop back to that for Ms. Shaw, I think, or perhaps Chief Moore. I thought we just heard in the context of ordinance 2025 that unlike police, that fire do not have salary bonuses for longevity certifications and training and the like. But unless I'm misunderstanding or misreading something, that, you know, the ordinance 2022 does list a hierarchy and series of longevity bonuses and other such things. What's the disconnect? What am I missing or not understanding?
Yeah, so there's, the employees covered by the collective bargaining agreement do have those. But when they are not, so just the firefighter chauffeur captain, so any rank above that or our administrative positions to the side of those are no longer qualified for those benefits of the collective bargaining agreement.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I was participating in some of those meetings with the mayor and talking about the salary cap, or whatever you want to call it, about the number of officers that are funded. And it seems like it's just, it's just a larger, it's a broader subject than just the pay. And the pay is constrained by the collective bargaining agreement. And it seems like there's several things that can be done. And I applaud the mayor and the city for looking at those and hope those go forward. It seems like, like, one of my questions earlier was with human resources, if we feel like there's, we're losing a lot of officers, I mean, are we, are we building up some understanding with exit interviews why specifically people are leaving? And how we can address those? Or are we use, are we doing it in an anecdotal way? And I, and I don't know the answer to that. So I really do think that we need to make sure we have a stable force. I'm not sure exactly how to get there, but increasing the number of officers perhaps over the years, as was done in previous administrations, seems like a structural thing that we shouldn't discount. And so that's that's my, that was my thoughts on it. I think it's a, it's a complex topic and it's, there's a lot of moving parts in it. And I really do support having a stable force however we get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Hi, thank you. I just have a couple of questions, if that's okay still? Just based on other council members' comments, okay. So I've heard that many of our officers live outside of the city. Have we done polling to see if that's the preference of the officers or if it is a product of Bloomington's high cost of housing?
I believe that may be Chief Decoff or Ms. Shaw?
I have not done any polling to that. But we could. Chief Decoff, you have anything to add?
I think it's probably a combination of both. I think there's some off, it's the cost of housing, you know, the type of house that a a new officer could afford. But then I also believe that, you know, there are some people that want maybe more space. They want to live farther out. So I think, really, to answer your question, it's a combination of both. But we haven't, we haven't done any kind of official polling or surveys to determine that.
Okay, thank you. Because I think that it might be useful to, you know, here are the preferences of the officers. Because as Councilmember Piedmont Smith was saying, I, and I agree that potentially offering some kind of incentive for officers and families to live in town if they're struggling to live in town due to costs would be nice. And I know other companies do that in other cities. So something like a housing allowance or even down payment assistance, I think, is a popular, is a popular way to help. So has the city looked into anything like that, a housing allowance or a down payment assistance for officers?
That's what we're currently researching. There are all kinds of different models out there and we're gathering all of that information. We've been doing that for a couple of weeks and then just compiling it to see what the best program and what, you know, best incentive program might be to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. This is like a little bit off topic, but I'm, this is in the maybe a little bit more for the mayor or Caroline. But I'm wondering then if we create some kind of housing allowance or maybe down payment assistance program for officers? We pilot it there and then potentially offer it to city employers across the board, maybe at certain salaries, because I know a lot of people struggle with housing costs here. So just an idea. I understand it's money at a time where things are tight. Last thing I want to say right now is, you know, I agree with a lot of what folks have said today, like, I'm definitely concerned with the hours that officers are working. And I think it's not only bad for the officers, right, but it's a lot, I mean, it's just a lot of overtime. So it's really bad for the community in general. Like, we don't want tired officers having to make difficult decisions. And so I, I am interested in, and I'm glad to hear that we're going to take steps to look at morale and culture and maybe responsibilities and how we can shift some of those. Because, I mean, I I've like just spent a lot of time working campaign jobs. Those are, of course, totally different, but like, I burn out, right? 60, 80 hours a week. And so the idea that people are doing this forever, like, I understand wanting to get a different job. So I, I'm very interested in trying to figure out how we get back to a place where officers can have a good work-life balance. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, I'll finish up and offer some comments of my own. Thank you for what you have done, Mayor Hamilton and Chief Decoff, to work toward the addition of social workers and non sworn officers to the police force. I think that is an important addition. And I think that's also a statement of the values we have when we look at issues of public safety. So I do applaud that and I wholeheartedly applaud any efforts that you can identify to retain our best officers. Human Resources 101 teaches us that it can be exponentially more expensive to have to deal with turnover than it is to simply hire and retain good people. So thank you. I look forward to hearing what you discuss in that regard. I also want to offer no, it's actually not just a friendly request, it's a very clear request. When numbers come back to us about how staff has trended, how the number of staff in BPD has trended over the last several years, I would ask you to clearly separate out sworn officers from non sworn officers, sworn officers from dispatch. I think it can be very misleading to conflate those and to suggest that we've had a 30 some percent increase in staff. Well, for most people, they never see the, for most of the public, they don't see behind the scenes staff. They just think of the most visible people, the sworn officers. And I think it creates a misleading impression of the investment we have made. So I would ask you to clearly, when you come back to us with numbers, please clearly separate those out. I think those numbers can also be helpful as we think about recruitment and retention in the coming years. And I think they may serve as a basis for an amendment that may come forward or two when we look at a final vote on this. So, thank you. With that, I'll invite a move due pass. Councilmember Piedmont?
Can I make another comment?
Please.
Sorry, I just wanted to comment because of something that you just said, Councilmember Scamblerie. I do think it's important to note that the addition of the Neighborhood Resource Specialists and the Social Worker, those are public facing positions. Those are positions that, that do take some work off of sworn officers' plates and can do more of that if trained correctly. So I think those should be called out in our numbers separately because those are not behind the scenes. Those are interacting and helping our community members.
Thank you. And I would agree that they are nonetheless different than sworn officers. So let's have another column for them. So, thank you. With that, I'll invite a move due pass.
Move due pass.
In a second?
Second.
I think that was Councilmember Sandberg. Madam Clerk, will you call the Volpeen?
Yes, Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And that was 900. With that, let's move to the second of three salary ordinances, Ordinance 2023, which fixes the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all departments of the City of Bloomington for the year 2021. And let's continue with the Ms. Caroline Shaw Show.
Thank you very much. It is a lot of me tonight. I apologize for that. So this next ordinance, I will say, is the densest one, the most, has the most in it. And the mayor did a really lovely job of covering more detailed things that I will not go into again in more detail, but I'm happy to take further questions. So I will do my best just to hit the highlights for all of you and then dig in deeper as you feel I need to. Ordinance 2023 sets 2021 pay grades and salary ranges for appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees. And consistent with prior years, administration recommends a 2% increase in civil city salaries. Salary ranges for the civil city pay grades and then adjusted by a 2% increase for 2021. The labor, trades, and craft pay rates, the ASME employees, consistent with their contract that goes through 2022, for 2021 is 2.5% increase. And then 2017, many of you know who are on the council with us, that you and the administration determined to increase common law minimum pay rates to at least the living wage. And the living wage for 2021 is $13.29 per hour. Now I'm going to just hit the highlights of the new position requests. The Economic and Sustainable Development Department requests a Transportation Demand Manager, which is a grade seven. Our projected fiscal impact for that, based on hiring the person on January 1st, which we all know, we typically don't have managed to do that in all cases. But these projections are based on that, $79,355. And that number also includes benefits, FICA, civil city, perf contributions. Those are things I talk about in the comp and benefits presentation during the budget hearings. In Public Works, they request Parking Garage Shift Supervisor, which is a grade four, and a Parking Garage Assistant Manager, which is a grade five. And these positions are necessary to the increase in parking facilities and the additional staff necessary to service these facilities when they come online. As you know, we're building garages right now. And this is based on funding availability and the need. Again, we won't be doing that on January 1st. The Community and Family Resources Department will change their Volunteer Network Assistant Coordinator, which has been vacant for a couple of years, which is a grade six, to a Special Projects Coordinator, also a grade six. And this coordinator will now serve as a liaison to nonprofit and other social service agencies. And because this position has been vacant, this actually represents a cost savings around $7,000. The 2021 ordinance adds an Engineering Department separating that out from the Transportation and Traffic Services Division, as we have discussed. And we are also asking for a title change for the Transportation and Traffic Engineer, which is currently a grade 11, to City Engineer, which is a grade 12, consistent with other department head positions. Our Human Resources Department is changing, downgrading their office, or upgrading their Office Manager position rather, to a Special Projects Manager. And this, this position will recommend and manage HR initiatives of another project. It's a much needed position for our department, I can selfishly say. And the projected fiscal impact of this is around $6,000. Quite a few changes here in the ITS department, and I will go over all those with you. ITS will change its Systems and Innovation Analyst, grade nine, Application Developer, grade eight, and Front End Developer, grade seven, to Three Application Analyst, grade seven. To focus these positions on enterprise software support and business analysis. There's no fiscal impact to this change. These are just title changes. And the Assistant Director will now be called the Assistant Director for Operations. And the Systems and Applications Manager will become the Assistant Director for Enterprise Applications. The Database Administrator Web App Developer's Title will now be Applications Infrastructure Analyst. These are all title changes and represent no fiscal impact. Finally, the Office Manager's Pay Grade is increased from a grade five, or a grade four to a grade five due to an increase in responsibilities and the fiscal impact of that is around $4,800. The Parks and Recreation Department Urban Forester Pay Grade was reviewed by the Job Evaluation Committee and they found that job below market. So we increased the grade from a six to a seven, and that represents a fiscal impact of almost $3,000. There are three part-time, .75 FTE customer service reps who are currently a grade two and customer in Parks and Rec, and they're becoming Customer Relations Reps, so they're grade three. We made a decision that these positions are also similar. They should all be consistently titled in the same grade, which is a grade three. Lost my place. Forgive me for a second here. That represents a fiscal impact of just a little over $3,000. In the Planning and Transportation Department, soon to be Planning Department, their zoning planner, zoning planner, grade five, is changing to a zoning planner and GIS analyst, which will now be a grade six. That represents a fiscal impact of around $2,600. And as we've also discussed, police is repurposing five officer first class positions into one data analyst, grade six, two social workers are added, grade eight, and two Neighborhood Resource Specialists, grade five, in order to focus on proactive policing strategies. These changes result in a cost savings a little under, a little over $30,000. And then the Evidence Room Clerk has been a full-time position since the beginning of the year. And we've removed the .5 FTE and made it a full FTE. This is an oversight that we just caught and fixed. And finally, the Crime Analyst will now be called a Data Analyst. I'm really getting close to the end, I promise. Public Works is creating a new division called Parking Services. The Parking Enforcement Division will move from Police to the Division of Public Works. Parking Garage Employees will move to the Public Works Operations and Facilities Division to Parking Services. And the Parking Services Director will now manage the Parking Services Department. And her grade will change from an eight to a nine because of the added responsibilities. That represents a fiscal impact of around $3,000. Additionally, three Parking Enforcement Officers, currently grade three, will become meter technicians, technicians, so they can grade, so they can focus on maintaining and repairing parking meters. That's also a grade three. And then Utilities, we will move two meter readers from ASME, grade 103, to meter service persons, ASME, grade 105, to accommodate the smart metering system that the Utilities Department is employing, deployed. The fiscal impact of this is about $1,370. The ordinance also moves the Communications Operations from the Transmission and Distribution Division to the Administration Division, and a Labor and Lineman from Transmission and Distribution to the Environmental Division. Just some moving around. And again, six, in addition, six Utility Customer Relations Reps and Cashiers that were formerly at grade two are now, like I said earlier with the other department, becoming Customer Service Reps, grade three. And that represents a fiscal impact of $8,400. Finally, the Public Information Specialist, grade seven, received a grade increase and a title change to Communications Manager, grade eight, due to changing duties and responsibilities. That's about a $4,000 impact. And you'll, maybe you'll remember over the years, we occasionally clean things up. This time, we're addressing the word secretary. We're now, all secretaries are becoming administrative assistants. And I will not go into all the details of those unless you're interested. And then finally, in the HR Department, again, we are adding an additional administrative assistant. We have one, we're adding a .6 FTE to help us many of our administrative tasks. And the Police Department, they're adding three and a half telecommunicators who are grade six to Central Emergency Dispatch. And that represents a fiscal impact of around $260,000. And this is also through the dispatch budget outside of this, our actual budget, but in our salary ordinance. And in Public Works, last but not least, is adding four additional Customer Service and Security Specialists, grade three, again, to support the new parking facilities, and those will be added as needed. I'm happy to take any questions at this time, and I really appreciate your patience with all those details.
Really impressed that you did all that with no nuts at all, so.
Yeah.
Let's get a council question. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you. I have many, but I'm going to start with just one. Ms. Shaw, I thought I heard you say the Planning and Transportation Department soon to be the Planning Department. Is that right?
Yes. So for a few years, I think since 2012, and some of those who have better history with the city than I do, can correct me. But for several years, the Engineering Department, which was once a part of Public Works, moved over to Planning and then became Planning Department, became Planning and Transportation Department. And now we are following the guidance of the NOVAC study from 2018, which recommended we separate those two departments out. We thought about it, talked about it quite a bit. I think the mayor addressed that pretty in great detail earlier. And so, yes, the Engineering Department will be a standalone department, and the Planning and Transportation Department will now just be called the Planning Department, like it was many years ago, I believe.
And so I would just like to follow up. And so we will, in theory, or in reality, not have a Transportation Department?
Would someone from the Planning or Department like to address that? I, I mean, I think we're not losing anything. We're just, it's a title change. Planning Department, not Planning and Transportation. Transportation is largely engineering, a function of engineering. I don't think I have the best answer. Oh, Scott, there you are. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, this is Scott Robinson, the interim director for Planning and Transportation. Councilmember Rosenberg, I'll try to answer your question. So, yes, previously, we were just called the Planning Department. Planning functions still are the same that we did at that time as we do now, as far as planning for transportation. Engineering is seen as kind of the capital arm that implements those projects. We'll still coordinate with them. So the title name and the name Transportation doesn't reflect any change in duties that we will be doing with the creation of the Engineering Department. Does that answer your question?
I'm not sure, honestly. I, I mean, so the Planning, the Transportation Staff, like the Bike Head Coordinator will be staying in Planning, but not going to Engineering?
That's correct. And all the transportation planning functions with Metropolitan Planning Organization and long-range planning are still within the Planning Department. Or Planning and Transportation today, or depending on 2021, the Planning Department.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I guess I'm really stuck on this because I, in my head right now, I'm just thinking, like, we're in the middle, right, of this climate crisis. I mean, we're going to be in the middle forever, but like, transportation is such a big part of that. It just feels like to not have that title somewhere where residents can find transportation policy, get transportation questions. I mean, I guess I just don't understand why we would get rid of that.
Yeah. Again, I think the, the core functions of the department's not changing, and we did those same functions back, as Mashaw explained, prior to when Engineering and Planning merged. It is just a name change, and I don't know if that's, you know, that's something that we can take under consideration. There's no physical change of staff within the Planning Group and the duties and functions that staff have done since that time.
I would just add, I, I don't see, I still see these groups really working super closely together, as they have, and as they do with Public Works. So I appreciate your comment. I'm not sure I have a lot more to offer there. I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin.
Yes, this is a question for our attorney. Mr. Lucas, I seem to remember that departments of the city are established by ordinance. Am I forgetting something? Should, I mean, have we, in fact, debated an ordinance to create an Engineering Department? An ordinance to change the name of the Planning and Transportation Department?
I didn't want to go back and look. I, Mashaw may have some.
I am not an attorney, as you all know, but I did call Filippa about, early, about this earlier. And we're, she is working on legislation as we speak, or has been working on it for several weeks. Here she is to speak to that. We are waiting for the approval of this, the salary ordinance legislation before we move forward with the required legal documentation to create the standalone Engineering Department, and Filippa, I'll let you.
Yeah, as far as name changes, I, I don't know exactly about name changes because that, what we would be doing is creating a new department, an Engineering Department. So that would require an ordinance, but you wouldn't address that ordinance unless you approve this change via the budget.
I, thank you. That is my question for now.
Additional question? Oh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, sorry.
Yeah, the legislation that is in front of us right now says Planning and Transportation Department, so. This is all very confusing to me. The question that I had to start out with is about the Transportation Demand Management position. And this position was born out of a T D M study that was conducted in collaboration with the Planning and Transportation Department. And our transportation planners obviously are in that department. And departments do collaborate and work together, but I still don't understand why the T D M position would not be in the department that has birthed the position and has created the plans that the position is meant to implement. Can you speak to that, please?
So I will just tee off Mr. Crowley, who I see now, Mr. Crowley. So I, when I will just add, as the mayor addressed, I believe, earlier, we initially are placing it in the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. That is not necessarily a forever decision, and Alex will now, I think, tell you why we landed there. Thank you, Alex.
Thanks, Caroline. Yeah, I mean, I'll echo what the mayor was saying. It was a discussion that we, that E S T, the mayor's office, and Planning had together. The T D M plan development is, is one effort. The execution of that plan is a different effort. And, you know, as, as the mayor said, I think reasonable people can disagree. What is, what is the administration's judgment on this? Is that the position having a quick start is important. Being able to tap existing relationships is important. Not having to kind of craft, craft them from scratch. And that, that, you know, is determined that E S D, having a lot of those existing relationships already in the market can get this thing going quickly and successfully. And then, as, as Caroline said, you know, the future, we, we may change, change that. But, but it's about speed of execution. It's about success of execution. And really, the position is going to be primarily one that is looking at marketing existing infrastructure as opposed to planning for the development of new infrastructure. At least early on, there will be a feedback loop for the future infrastructure. And so it was, you know, it was determined that this would be the best placement for it. Scott, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I, I think, again, appreciate the question, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. You know, many plans are born out of our department. And I would just say that oftentimes, those plans are left to other departments to implement, and this is another example of that. During that plan development, Bloomington Transit, E S D, external agencies were involved in that coordination effort. So a lot of internal discussion, again, I think with, largely with a lot of the duties that are associated with this, being an external-facing, working with outside employers, with those established relationships, is probably a good fit right now for, for how E S D is currently structured with that. So again, I, you know, I don't think it's a, I think it's kind of a six, one-half-a-dozen-other scenario. But again, current approach, feet on the ground, it makes the most sense to place that position in E S D at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional question? Councilmember Smith?
So my question is, going back even farther on that is, does, what, what is the Transportation Demand Manager? How are they, what are we going to get a return on investment for that? Position? When the mayor's talking about, we may have to tighten our belts and cut Jack Hopkins in, you know, the arts in Bloomington, and then we're going to hire a marketing person for $80,000 a year. I, I just, I just can't understand that. Mr. Crowley, if you want to.
Yeah, let me, let me try to speak to that. I think it's a good, it's a really good question, actually. Because I think there's a, sometimes some confusion around what, what Transportation Demand and Management does and, and its role. I would think about it this way, which is, it's, you know, the, the, the community as a whole, the city, the state, you know, the federal, the federal government, everybody is, makes a tremendous amount of investment in alternative modes of transportation. And those are, you know, they're out there. So let's take Bloomington Transit, for example, or, or the, the bike paths have been put in, or, or whatever. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of investment going on to create alternatives to, you know, sort of not very climate-friendly ways of getting around that we've all gotten used to in our lives. And, and so, you know, to be able to focus a position or, and/or an effort to really highlight those alternative modes, to be able to create or eliminate the friction that exists right now between people who are doing one behavior and, and ultimately moving them to a, you know, a different and better behavior. That, that takes effort. It's, it's, you know, it's happening to some extent naturally, but, but it really can be done much more effectively and, and, and successfully in a focused effort. And that takes not just people, it takes sometimes incentives, it takes the cooperation of, of partnerships in the private sector and other parts of the community. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty significant effort and, and can yield really good results of people then moving into using some of the facilities and some of the alternative modes of transportation that, that, that could be better used. So, you know, it's probably my mistake to call it a kind of marketing position because that sort of sounds a little fluffy, and you're not quite sure what that means. But really, think about it as, as doubling down on already significant investments that are happening in infrastructure and, and looking for ways to move people to, to, to use those more rigorously. Does that, does that make sense?
Well, I, I buy part of that. Is it necessary that we do this now during a pandemic?
Well, it's, you know, it has significant climate implications. And so, you know, so the pandemic itself, obviously, is, you know, we're all really deep into it. What we're really doing is anticipating not only the current, but future, you know, climate impacts that we're going to be feeling. And, and we're, and we're trying to invest to get ahead of, of, you know, some of the, some of the current behavior that's, that's, that's happening right now relative to that.
Yeah, and, and even during this pandemic, our transportation, just the use of it has gone down quite a bit. And so we're not, we're not expending as much carbon into the atmosphere. And it's one, it's one of those things that has stuck in my head that, since it was proposed, that it just seems like, I'm not sure I think it's a great use of our funds right now. I, I understand the utility of it for future, but right now, it seems like. But, but I appreciate, and, and I, your response, and I thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I had a question about the parking enforcement employees that are being moved from the Police Department to Public Works. I didn't really see that reflected in the numbers. Can you, Miss Shaw, can you tell me where those are?
That might be a better question for Mr. Underwood, if he's with us. When you say in the numbers, do you mean within the budget?
No, the number of employees in this.
Oh, in the ordinance. I can look that up, if you bear with me just a second. Several-page ordinance, as you know. So parking enforcement. That there's currently 10 parking enforcement officers. We're reducing that number to seven, as I said earlier. And then three of those are becoming meter technicians. But they will also have a shared responsibility because, you know, as you, once we get all those meters fixed up, those, those folks can go back to help with the parking enforcement. We tried to do some cross-training between positions so that we don't have people who only know how to do one thing. So, does that make sense?
Yes, yes. I, I saw those there. I guess they weren't mentioned as having a budgetary impact. You know, and they weren't in your memo as, you know.
There is no, there is, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but there is no budgetary impact. It's just moving people around.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Then my other question was about the, let's see, where is it? In Section 2B, the Police Shift Differential says employees working in the Police Department as dispatchers and clerks shall receive a 26 cent per hour premium shift differential. And when I looked at, I wanted to see how many dispatchers are in the budget. I don't see anything that is called dispatcher. So I was trying to see what that lines up with. Is it telecommunications?
It is, it is. Dispatches is a shorter word. You know, it's telecommunications.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional question? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I had a question about the additional, and I guess existing budgeted social worker and neighborhood resource specialist positions within the Police Department. I'm of the, the view, as a matter of policy, that those should not be located in the Police Department. And Councilmember Piedmont Smith and I both expressed this to Mayor Hamilton and Deputy Mayor Renaiusen earlier this summer, and expressed a desire for those positions to be in a different department. And that's based on, you know, just a lot of research and talking to folks who, who work in the field. And, and we've heard a lot, actually, at the Council's Public Safety Committee meetings. And I, and both Councilmember Piedmont Smith and I did meet with the current Police Social Worker, Ms. Stone, I believe. And I guess, since that time, we've also now received, with the mayor and the council, a, a well-crafted and well-thought-out and well-researched petition from well over 100 community members who have asked for essentially the same thing, suggesting that those positions really do not belong within the police for ethical reasons and for reasons of trust and addressing the root causes of, of crime more effectively. So my question is, I guess, you know, I still have that preference, that those positions would be located elsewhere within the city structure. And my question is, you know, for the mayor probably, or Chief DeGoff, what, if, if there is any additional thoughts at this time about why or why not to, you know, move or keep those positions where they are? And, and also, if there's any thoughts about the longer-term view? I think there's some concern that even if those positions may, you know, like a proposal may be developed, for instance, in the context of a task force or a commission to move those positions in the future, that there might be a sort of path dependency issue that establishing more of them in Police Department now substantially lowers the chances that, that they would be moved in the future. So that's still of some concern to me, and one of the more significant sticking points on this budget. So I wanted to ask for additional thoughts from either the mayor or from Chief DeGoff at this time. Thank you.
Sure. Can I comment? Thanks so much for the question. I apologize. At the beginning, I, my, my 10-minute opening statement, which went 18 minutes, didn't cover all this stuff, and I apologize for that. I should have noted, we, that is an important, I mentioned that we got some petitions, and that was one particular one. I think the short answer, Councilmember Flaherty, is, I guess, two parts. One, in my view, adding those, those capabilities in the short term is a good thing to do to help respond to needs in public safety and to enhance our capacities in responding. We've been pleased with what the current social worker has done. And part one, that's part one, that, that they will be helpful in the short run and can be hired relatively quickly. Part two, we really don't have another place to put them in a way that would coordinate well in the short run. So from my perspective, over the next, you know, months and, and through 2021, I, I don't really see a good option without a thoughtful process. But point three would be absolutely the longer-term, community-based review of how and where policing ought to operate. And all those questions, is a cahoots program is a good idea. All those are very appropriate questions for that. I just think it, it takes some real deliberation. There are different views on that, and absolutely welcome that in that process. But that, that's how I would respond to that. I just think it's our best option at this point. And I think the Neighborhood Research Specialists and the social workers have been very important and powerful and effective in helping our community do better.
Can I comment on that also? So, so when we started this program, you know, there were only a handful of agencies around the country that had, had a, a social worker embedded in the Police Department. We, we have actually seen huge benefits to that because our whole Downtown Resource Officer Program really is a program that deals with people who have interactions with, with law enforcement, but don't necess, you know, arresting them and taking them to jail is not really the best option. And so, having a social worker who has those connections within the community is, is a great asset. She's also, and we expect the, the new ones, if the budget's approved, to be able to work with people, you know. And, and, you know, I, I understand the concerns of some of the petitions, but currently, nobody else is doing it. And so, we've stepped up to do this. I'm not opposed to looking at things in the future, but right now, we need these services. They're, they're extremely important with what we're doing, and nobody else is doing it. So we're stepping up. We're trying to, to, to get these programs up and running so that we can actually help people and, and get them services that they might need. So that's, that's really important for us. that's, that's really important for us, you know? We, we've changed kind of how we've done things with our DRO program over the years. And, and this is just actually another step in trying to divert people from the criminal justice system to other, other systems that can provide services. The, the stride program is, is a perfect example of that. That it's, it's a program that was started. It's a community-based program. But it relies heavily on, on law enforcement right now to, to get people there because we're the ones having those contacts with those people that need those services. And so it's just, it's, it's just really been a huge, huge benefit to us, having that social worker embedded with the belief. And the work that she's doing, I actually believe, is, is really changing people's lives.
I will, I will just add that I'm very proud of the city of Bloomington's Police Department for adding a social worker and being on the forefront of that. And just, I haven't even had a chance to tell Chief DeKoff, but another HR director in the city, in the, in the state, rather, reached out to me just in the last two days, asking me about our program. And they're making some, they're making similar plans for the 2021 year.
She's actually also been, been contacted by a variety of, of agencies from around the country, actually, about how we started ours and, and how they can take what we've done and institute those programs in their communities as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's most of first round questions. Are there any remaining first round questions? Any additional questions then, before we go to public comment? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. We were discussing crime analyst that has been changed to a data analyst. And I guess what I want to know is, what is the fundamental difference between those other than a title change?
They're, they're actually, it's, it's the same thing. They, they just analyze a lot of data. And when we started that program, that's kind of what, what that position was called. But they analyze all kinds of data. And so it really reflect, it's a, it's a much better reflection of what the, the job actually is.
Okay. Has the data that will be expected to be collected, has that expanded at all? Are, are we able to collect additional sources of data that maybe we weren't able to in the past? Specifically, specifically, for an example, how many officer stops are we having? What are the genders? What are the race? Maybe we've been keeping that, that data in the past, but it had been difficult to, to get to. Will this make it more transparent? Not that we had, not that we hadn't before, and I'm, I don't want to insinuate that.
No, I know what you mean. We're always looking at data and, and the types of data we could collect. The problem that we've experienced over the last year or so is that the requests that, that we've made internally and, and some of the requests that have been made externally has really bogged down the, the one person we have doing that. And so obviously, data is extremely important. And having a second analyst is, I think, going to speed up that process. Because when we, when we ask for stuff or when, when there's external request, it just takes forever because she's so backlogged and bogged down with her day-to-day stuff.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
Yes. The question I was going to ask was, will the administration move the TDM position to Planning and Transportation? But before I can ask that question, I have to ask the question, when did the administration plan to remove the word "transportation" from the name of the Planning and Transportation Department? Because it's coming as a surprise to this council member that the department was going to get renamed.
So I, I may have made a mistake tonight. I apologize for that because I was quickly, Isabel, Councilmember Piedmont Smith made the point that she was confused and I was like, oh, good point. So I started looking at the legislation. I may have gotten ahead of myself. So let me take that back and I will circle back with an answer on that question here in the next couple of days. Is that okay?
So you don't know off the top of your head if a department is changing names?
Well, we've talked about it in our circles, but I, the legislation does not reflect that. So I can understand why you might be surprised by that.
Okay. Well, I mean, again, before I ask this, this question that I intend to ask, I mean, the reason I want to ask it is because both from the ESD and Public Works Departments, I have seen an emphasis over the past year or two on parking supply, which is not the same thing as addressing demand. You know, people who drive cars demand parking. And, you know, when we've talked about increased fees for parking that reflect the actual cost of providing it or the market demand for it, you know, we've gotten generally, you know, neutral but potential good responses. But when it comes to building supply, the administration has been nothing if not an advocate for supply. The administration tried eminent domain to make a bigger parking garage at Forest Street. Argued, you know, substantially for the Trades District Garage, which I voted for. Argued, the sticking point over the Convention Center was whether or not there should be a parking garage attached to it. So why now, I guess, should I believe that the administration collectively, that ESD in particular, is going to suddenly become a, an advocate for the management of demand rather than the provision of supply of parking?
I can address that if you want.
Please.
Councilmember Volan, I, I, you know, I, I'm sure, I'm sure you're not suggesting it, but, but the department is not singly focused on building garages. The department.
I'm not suggesting that. You're right.
No, I know. So, so we have a broad swath of interests. We, we, you know, the S of ESD is all about sustainability. My department also includes arts and culture, as you know. So, you know, the department is complex, has balances of variety of different, sometimes apparently competing interests. And what makes it unique in its configuration relative to, frankly, most cities in the, in the United States is that by combining all of those perspectives into a single, into, into a single sort of department, then policy decisions and/or, or policy recommendations coming out of that department can be much more nuanced than they might be if you had sort of siloed departments dealing with each one. So, you know, the, the interest that the department has in promoting alternative modes of transportation aligns very squarely with the department's emphasis on, on, on sustainability and the city's interest in sustainability. So I think, you know, sort of thinking of just the garages as, as the, as the primary focus of the last couple of months, I think is, is not really the full picture.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll grant you that, but I'm going to go back now to earlier this year when we were talking about College Mall Road. And it wasn't so much that the administration wasn't ready to add pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure on the road. I can understand why it wasn't able to be shoehorned in at the last minute. The concern I had was that it didn't even occur to Public Works to think about that when applying for this huge grant. And I guess what I want to know is, you know, to what extent are, is, is your department going to go to bat within the non-siloed discussion among departments and City Hall for an aggressive approach to reducing the demand for car capacity?
We are absolutely going to do that. And we have been doing that regularly. So, I mean, it's really not, you know, it's not, it's not that different than what we've been doing, you know, leading the, you know, the, the effort at the city for, for a variety of different projects. And, and this falls pretty squarely within that mission. So, you know, I think, I think we've got, we've got some great resources in there to, to support the, the TDM effort, including the new headcount that would be proposed in this budget. And I think that'll, that'll work really effectively in promoting what the TDM plan has laid out as being the objectives and the goals.
Let me ask one more specific question. Can you name a particular example of an advocacy you've done to reduce demand for cars?
I mean, you, if you read the Sustainability Action Plan and you take a look through there, you can see absolutely efforts that.
No, I know what's in the plan. What I'm asking is, what specific project? What's an example of something you've done?
Let me, let me step in if I may. Look, Alex Crowley leads a department that is doing extraordinary efforts to improve our actions on climate. They have been very instrumental, for example, in the Seven Line Project to figure out how to accomplish a major new urban trail, to expand that network, reducing 115 parking spaces. They have been instrumental in implementing the sustainability plan altogether to, to assess our situation, to develop plans to implement that. And as a whole administration, Mr. Volan, we're, we're extremely focused on how do we do the things that will make our community stronger, which includes economic job protection, to make sure people can have jobs and listening to the needs of downtown employers while absolutely being aggressively focusing on how do we invest in alternatives, from the $10 million bicentennial bond program, which focused on in building that kind of infrastructure, to a whole range of other things. So I, I certainly respect that people can feel the TDM position could more appropriately be put in Planning and Transportation. That's a perfectly legitimate position. I don't agree with it. It's, I just have a different view of where we can be most effective in getting those results. But to, to suggest that the ESD department is only focused on expanding parking supply is just really inaccurate. And I don't want to let that stand.
I, I was asking for an example of how they weren't, but okay. But since you're here, Mr. Mayor, I would ask you, do you intend to rename the Department of Planning and Transportation?
We'll bring you a, I, I gather from our lawyer, we'll bring you a, a ordinance to change that name. I, I do think transportation, it, transportation is hugely important for the city. Public Works has a lot of work related to transportation. Engineering Department has a lot of work related to transportation. And the Planning and Transportation Department, as currently named, certainly does a ton of planning for transportation. But they do a lot of planning for all kinds of things. So we're, we're happy to discuss that. I think returning its name to what it was before the engineering department was put in it was kind of a logical thing from my perspective, but it's not.
So the, the answer is yes, then. You do intend to rename the department?
I, I think so, but I'm happy to talk about it. That's not what's really on the table tonight, that we're trying to get your support for the budget, but happy to talk about that further.
Thank you.